And I'm just going to verbally say that we have council member Justin James.
Well, I will call the meeting to order to let Anthony and I would ask us all to please stand. Call to the community. See anybody here and nothing's coming in, so we will move on to staff reports. Go ahead, Tricia.
Thank you, Vice Chair of Commissioners. So the rec center is gearing up to open up here in a couple of weeks for this month. May 24th is the first day that the pool will be open. We are also hosting our first dive-in movie that evening, so we'll be showing Moana Two. The pool will close at five, so the guards can get the movie gear up and everything like that. But the doors were open at seven and they, we should start around 7:30. So you can go to our website to purchase, pre-purchase tickets. And if you are, if anyone asks in their members, either have a summer pass or monthly membership, they do get, that is included in their membership. So punch passes don't include, so they would have to purchase tickets for that. But we're excited to get the pool and the summer season going. So spread the word and we hope to see you guys over there to show Moana Two. Preschool is going strong where their last graduation is the week of the, actually a couple of weeks of the 20th, I think it's the 22nd when they're graduating. And then preschool's out and then they start gearing up for their summer camp and doing the registration there. Special event season, they had their, they're right now just kind of analyzing some of the things from the previous year as well, looking at Harton Park in their lineup, ready for that for next year's lineup. And then they're also working on the Sparkle in the Square viewing party. That's going to be on July 3rd, so I'm sure next, next meeting, Tricia will have some more information for you guys on, on that event. Sports, we just finished our last season of our spring season, so it was a great time. Everyone seemed to enjoy themselves and we're now gearing towards our summer kind of skill clinic class, classes for T-ball, flag football, but still. Outside of that, that's all that's really we have going on now. We have to take any questions.
Thank you so much. And what works? Monthly report with Kyle?
Thank you, Vice Chair Phillips, Commissioner. Good to see everybody again. A few big things that I actually want to touch on this month. Sure, most of you have noticed the Bologna Hilltop cleanup. Staff has been up there removing salt cedars, freestanding garage that was at the bottom of the hill, as well as dead palms and the sea scrub. We are getting ready to start for the land development for the library. Party will be doing their grading project here in the next couple of weeks. We're going to all of them get a deal with that, that side with area. We'll be up there for the next week or so to continue removing some other additional stuff. We were able to remove most of the old playground equipments, old trash can, the hilltop there, clean out the old connect. So once that's all finished, we'll, we'll get rid of that comments up there and it'll just kind of be a clean slate for the rest of the project. Cactus Valley Electrical, they'll be starting the big lighting the next two weeks. I think May 19th is the start of it. So staff will be out there next week doing the trenching around the lake. The electrical company will come in and do the electrical lighting, all the groundwork and everything like that. We will be moving with electrical panels. Those will all be kind of connected with the current lights that's at the lake. West Coast Harvest will be planting the three new California fennel palms that were damaged during two recent accidents. Those will be done next third of the week. The, sorry, I haven't just issued.
Go back to April first.
We'll just pause right there. Let's go on then to approval of the initiatives from the April 10th meeting. So need to take a minute, it was over. Otherwise, you're ready, I will.
So that was Justin Jones.
On favor of approving the minutes from April 10th?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, now it's permed. Yard of the border.
So I have that. Was unable to get it attached to the packet. So after telling everything, the, I just had the most votes were 1115 North Villanueva Drive.
In my opinion, she's a really good friend. So we have to approve that, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to approve 1115 North Villanueva Drive to receive yard of the park?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. There's our winner. Improvements to empty lot on Serrano Drive. Stop, great.
Thank you. It was about a year ago or so, we, I think we set off on an effort to locate little areas that could be improved and what was did using American accounting assessors left side, find like the actual blocks. Oh, wait a minute, like that's ours. And this was one that we came across at the time and maybe we didn't talk about it. Not much has changed on it. But this is, if you're at the rec right south of there on Serrano Drive. Yeah, so I think everyone knows more. You see the picture, there's a little flat surface that is the rock garden.
You know, great COVID episodes.
Was it? Okay. It's, yeah, it's less than what it was then. So I just wanted to throw this out here as something that maybe, it seems like it's forgotten little pocket that the HOA doesn't take care of. We have quarter minus on it, I think, and keep the weeds off of it. That's about it. So as we have the opportunity to relocate something, like I know we're putting some saguaros and Quonass Bar, well, and this was a great fun. Just as the opportunity arises and we're doing projects, not sure if it's more like a special project, unless we have another scout that wants to do something, this would be a great time to throw it down. Like, go for it.
Like the little triangle on Florence and Villanueva?
Uh, yeah, yeah. So any other thoughts on it or?
I like that.
Things we might want to do with it?
Were you thinking like just desert landscape and kind of do something?
Yeah, I don't have a strong opinion other than it just looks like it's forgotten about it. And I bet you nobody, like if you ask people who owns it, some people think it's the HOA or the city or the property owner right there. I don't, I don't know who has got contacts, the Boy Scouts, maybe we, they need a list of potential projects and we could have someone do that again, which would save us some money in terms of doing the legwork on giving donations. Or I don't know, do you guys have any thoughts on staff that would fit in with other work that we have done?
So there's a few things in this, this area, I apologize for any of them. There is a utility, so we do have that high pressure pass line through there. So we need to be very mindful of what we're planning in that area. I think that's why it's never been addressed in the past. We've had some small surface, you know, art projects that have been placed there. If you give them a picture, you can see there's some painted rocks, you know, little circle. I would recommend that we stay away from those high utility.
Yes, yeah.
If we can, you know, do something closer to that curb line, that would be best. Maybe come up with something else with a couple of granite, whatever it may be, river rap rock which are on top of those utilities.
Does that line run between the apartments or between the condos?
So it jogs from the road, cuts through and actually feeds the kind of area over there. So it comes straight across. I know there was some stuff there in the past, some smaller parts and smaller trees. The other issue is irrigation, we don't have any irrigation. I'm not saying that we can't add that, it's happened to existing lines on the east side of that curb. But I'd like to preferably keep it minor, just with utility.
What about something like a sail shade and a bench or something like that? Just then you're not irrigating anything and you're not planting anything, but it's still a little bit more inviting than right now.
Possibility with the sidewalk crossing through there, maybe necessary for interventions and shit.
Do you think with the eavesman, like popping a couple plants and don't need irrigation like saguaros there would be?
We, we can plant any type of, you know, low growing plants in there. I'm just, I worry about the trees. You know, roots are very essential, that's what I'm concerned about the most. I'm not opposed to plants or anything like that. It's just, it's trees, cactus are fine, they're not a basic species, anything like that.
I think maybe as long as the opportunity arrives.
Guess if the whole area is in the east wind, so they'll probably avoid putting it right on top of the, you know, where they might dig up in the future. Okay, all right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to go back and let Kyle finish. Yep. Apologize for that. So McCarthy will be relocating preschool cacti up at the hilltop. Unfortunately, it's very big, large ones that are in the way of screen. And so McCarthy reached out to us, asking if we have an area that they would transplant these. Obviously, Quonass Park is the perfect place. We've lost a few in the last six to eight months. So we did meet with McCarthy two weeks ago, three weeks ago now, on site for locations of these. So I think they're starting them next week, if I'm not mistaken. So they're going to start moving those away. We're working on wall repairs. I'm sure most of you seen the Berlin accident, going through that backyard. The footer block was about three to four weeks out. And then we were updated that it was 16 weeks out. So thankfully, the contractor was able to locate that footed burial block a little bit quicker. So they are gonna, we have a pre-pon meeting on Monday and I think they're going to start construction on Tuesday. So next week. I'm sure you guys have noticed as well, Scott Park, we replaced most of those benches in Scott Park. They're in pretty despair, rust. I was short two, I have the other two on order, so quickly we get those here very quick. And both of those last two will be replaced. Are those 10 years old? 2016, so yeah, I understand that as well. They are, they were, you know, all aluminum exposed to elements and radiation. That's why we decided to go with the poly that ventures that'll kind of withstand the weather and water damage. And they are the memorial benches. So there's a possibility if anybody wants to, you know, what we do with a bench program, everybody, anybody can shout and purchase those benches with the plaque from Memorial. Those are available now, so we can start on that as well with Scott Park.
Did we ever update the memorial program? I mean, we talked about it a couple of years ago.
I mean, yeah, it's completely updated. There's not a backlog? Nope, no backlog. We've had two recent, two recent purchases at the lake, so it's up and running. We've had a few residents reach out to us, but those are available now as well.
Is the bench at the lake the same, are the same?
Yes, same song. We're trying to replace, that's all.
So do you have kind of a standing order with the bench?
As much as I would like to order enough inventory, I just don't have the space for it. So we, we order what we can store at the moment and we'll replace as we go. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions. On the lights at the lake, can you describe a little more of what type of lights we decided on? How many and how far apart? So there'll be 30 lights, they're 42 inches. The same color as the dock that RFL Brown, so it'll match with the dock. LED, low lighting, they're adjustable, so they can go from 3, 5, and 8,000 K. It was more for safe footing. We were having resident complaints of how dark the lake is at night. A lot of residents said to walk the lake early night, late night, early morning. And it was a safety concern for Avondale PD as well. And this is why we decided to start this project. And like I said, it's more of a safe footing as well, especially at night. We don't want anybody walking off into the lake when it's there. We do have, you know, minimal lights around the lake, between the fountains and the dock. But I just, I, I feel like it wasn't enough on security issue as well as, you know, safety concerns. It's hard for them to do patrols when you can't see what's going on. But yeah, they, they're, they're really pretty. It took me a while to pick up the bad ones. I got some feedback from staff and a few residents that live in the area. Because obviously that affects, or affects them the most that live in the lake. So I think everybody's happy with, will be happy with the decision.
And when are those going?
The 19th. I'll just start on the 19th.
When does parking lot at Camelback Park start?
I don't have that answer.
Okay.
I, I don't.
I just noticed it was kind of touched on a little bit in one of them, but.
Yeah, so we're at 90% plans. Being a city engineer, I don't think we have a 8. I was just doing my part for the landscape and irrigation to make sure that everything's working properly. It's going to be very minimal removals. We are going to add a few other additional trees, a few other plants. I tried to, we tried to minimize the removals of the current trees. Just with any construction, unfortunately, we may lose one or two just with ground disturbance. There is that one pine tree closest to Villanueva curb line there. I have, we may lose that one, we're trying, we're going to try to save it, but I can't promise serving that system to that, to that pine tree. You know, extremely drought prone. Anything else to serve on, we take a big chance.
Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Now, may I, if I may, I want to say to the commissioner that just spoke on the, the lights around the lake, Kyle was worked over the ringer by my fair face at the last meeting. So I want to express from the council side that his, Kyle's got a good plan and he, he knows what he's doing. And I'm happy, when we get down to the commissioners' report, I'm happy to just go on Camelback Park if that helps.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Kyle?
One, since we're talking about lighting and safety, and I am a south side resident myself, so I'm sure you saw my excitement about that. Is there any talk of lights on the other side where the park is and the red path that continue? Because it gets so dark.
Speaking of stacks. There is a set of plans that we worked on two or three years ago now, on our previous city, anyone who was here. There was talks of path lights, additional seating. I don't want to say like a bus stop style, but that's kind of what it was referring to. I do have an NCP for this next year. I don't know how fast we can cross that, because obviously we don't have a plan for that. But it is, it's been talked.
Just for like, again, resident insight over there as well, there has been an influx of kiddos on that site. Like my group kind of came in and there wasn't a lot of kiddos and now there's a lot over there now. So just maybe to kind of keep that in mind, like there, I've noticed them from toddler, like new and toddler up to Litchfield, you know, size and higher. So there's quite a few of them that are hitting that park now and when it's dark at 6 o'clock, you know, they have to go home, but nobody wants to go home, it's still cool out, you can be out, you know what I mean? So just, it's definitely becoming much more kid friendly over there than it has been in, say, the last 10 years. My kiddos were the like crazy ones over there, kind of really like almost only for a while, you know, like one, you know, one or two scattered, but now I would say the majority of the houses, just kind of from desert and around, most of them are becoming family homes again. So there's a lot of, lot of action on that side and possibly across them. Very scary.
That's a scary spot.
Anything else for Kyle? Yes?
I'm sorry, just my, my, yeah, my compliments to Kyle. Like I, I, like I said, I'm new to this committee, but Kyle does a finished job and it's, it's recognized by council and I'm sure it's recognized on, on this committee. But we're very lucky to have Kyle, he does a great job. Everything he, he's done since he's, you know, ascended into this role has been great. And so just appreciate everything you do, Kyle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to possible future uses for the downtown library building, which if you remember was Sunny Culbres' presentation in Call to the Community last month. And Sunny suggested possibly something along the lines of the community center type of thing. And I talked with Anthony for a minute on this and talked to Tricia too, since they both were not going to be here today. And what we came up with for today would be to start this discussion, kind of just get your wheels turning and all of that today. And we can have some discussion on it, throw out some ideas. But since those three are missing and it is new, this will continue and I think it will probably continue for more than one meeting. A couple of things that I thought of, Anthony's thought of, Tricia throughout there would be a senior center, a community center with multiple uses, after school program, teen program, senior program, you know, whatever. There is also, you could also think about moving the preschool to the library and freeing up that space in the rec where the preschool is for something else there. You can also go, could think bigger and maybe it's time to expand the rec itself and update that and maybe even let the staff at the rec move over to the library and have like real offices over there. Possibly even expand the pickleball and tennis courts and take some of that grassy area out because there's a lot of people leaving the wig worm right now who are looking for a tennis and/or a pickleball home and that could be another use in there. And for me, that library building is iconic, but I wouldn't be opposed to having the inside changed around. But personally, I think we need to kind of leave the outside alone. So those are just things that I visited with Anthony for a minute about. But at this point, I would say just start thinking and talking and asking your neighbors and your friends and, you know, we'll definitely put it on the agenda for, for next month, probably again for just a discussion topic. But what do you think?
I should talk about this last month, but it was talk at one point of other things we go together there, like city staff. Is that, is it like, it's, it's blank slate at this point? Is there any part of the building that's committed to something already?
I don't think there's any consent, so.
Okay, so it's all okay.
It's, yeah.
Who's got?
Correct. Yep. Any other ideas? Yes, Commissioner, sorry, Councilman James, sorry.
Exactly what you said is the sentiments of council. We, every idea that you just mentioned is something that's, that's on the table. Talk to your friends, talk to your neighbors, talk to everybody. I think the, the one thing that would be considered off limits is the shell of that building remaining.
Yeah.
And, but what happens on the inside is it's at the will of, at the will of the citizens of the Litchfield proper, so.
Yeah, well, that's good to know, we're on the same page with you all. Anybody else have any thoughts, ideas, questions?
But I guess maybe one way to think about it is like work. What demand have people expressed to the rec center in terms of like, do we do more of this? Or just like, we just can't do it?
Um, I mean, a lot of the things are, we get is indoor facilities. We need a center, we don't have the rooms indoor facilities really going down except for, so we always let them know we have parks or somewhere we have the pool deck. So I know that's something that people ask about is, do we have any indoor facilities? So I mean, community center is also, also a pretty good idea because that also helps out with those type of things that just kind of depends on what everyone wants to go there. But the biggest need is pretty much an indoor facility where we can possibly have swimming and outside people can reserve the areas and stuff. For that is the biggest that asked, that we would usually, especially once the summer comes and you want to do a party or host a party outside at the park. They, they use the pool obviously for their whole parties, but if they're, they don't, if it's not supposed to be swimming, eating or anything like that, then you don't have indoor areas for it, so.
What about you all, what about the staff? Would, would have more space for you guys? Because I know some of you are sort of jumbled over there. You would like?
I think so is good, but I think, you know, we're, so we're, we're be happy with whatever we could do. I think it'd be having more rep areas would be nice to have. Obviously it could help out, you know, like we said, getting maybe some different courts or anything there. But obviously it's always nice when you can have the full staff. We, we all share that obviously. Wherever the beer goes, that's the plan, that's the plan. But, you know, we're, we're happy to help out and answer the questions you guys have for that, so.
Do we have any guidance in terms of like, so if we open that up, then it needs to be staffed to some degree, right? Like what sort of off-act we sign up for on the business in terms of like an increase of staff? That, you know, just wanted to come up with ideas, go, okay. That's going to be a part of the full-time person.
I mean, for the community center, if we, if we went to the senior center, the multi-use, it would probably just be kind of like what the rec has, but office staff. Where it wouldn't really require a full time or anything like that. It just requires someone to man the safe art desk, the welcome in center. And those, right now our cashiers are about 19 hours part-time, they're all part-time. So they just add some more cashier or front desk if it goes that route. It just depends on what gets placed in there, we're kind of into the staffing.
I like that after school program, the school across the road, so that's just a natural thing. And many of these sorts of spaces end up being more in the spring, right?
I think having, having that space, people find things to do in there at the, the library.
Things to do in there at the the library meeting when everyone was talking about wanting. The library to stay there. Most of them were talking about going there to read books, they were talking about going there to hang out with their friends or, you know, just a gathering space in general.
Well, and we had talked too about having, you know, initially when we were going to build a new scout park or a new scout lodge. That was going to be kind of available for community too, so that's now changed, so we, you know, this could be an opportunity to. Move that and have it be used for, like you said, multipurpose.
There's, there's no, I mean, I don't know architecturally how the, how, what's load bearing, what's not. There's no. Room to carve out any sort of indoor miniature, like a pickleball sized court or a racquetball or multi-use, like, you know, they have some sports that are. Turned it into volleyball.
I think the noise would be problematic.
That, yeah. Trying to read like, yeah, okay, yeah.
I like the brainstorm.
Great idea. A lot of those, a lot of those walls are load bearing just the way how. How that building is set up, um, facing wall. I know each security, I love walls, walls are load bearing. I don't know how a wall, I'm not a reporter, said that.
Yeah, I was trying to think of things that we like absolutely don't have, don't have an indoor activity, additional space for the summer. You know, kids are in the board. And maybe this, this is a way of addressing that. But it's a gap.
For both the young ones and our seniors. Being taken out of the house. Place you go, you know what I mean? We get happy fever in the summertime, just like the northerners do in the winters, you know? This thing, just. I'm all about the multi use for many, many reasons. But I grew up military, so there were community centers out every day, so that's how we all. Thought together and did things, you know, so pool tables, basketball. Monthly events, volunteer work, they were the people who to kind of help me with the employment. You volunteered and you learned how to work, you know, while you were there. Opportunity to have a job, you didn't really get paid, but you got free membership or, you know, whatever it was. So it was a neat way to. Learn some skills, you know? Think it could be a screaming free. Place for them to go to. And then seeing a lot of them and talking, I like, I talked to a lot of the kiddos in our community, a lot of them, again, from elementary up to high school. They want to put the phones down, computers down, tablets down. They're looking for things to do, but there's not anything for them to do, so they're back up for the video game. They're back to TikTok, they're back to, because where do they go? You know, we have no place for concerts, we have no place for arts, we have no place for. Poetry, we have no place for, we have no place for them to go. I had a metal show in my record store. The kids literally needed a place to go and I would tell you that they absolutely loved it because it was safe, they were fine, their parents knew where they were. You know, it's not some backyard in my desert like many of us did our concerts back in the day, you know, so. An advocate for the kiddos, it it's a place for them to go inside Litchfield and outside. You know, because Millennium Wester, which will, you know, they're all right here and we can all, you know what I mean? So um, just their feedback, because I talk to them on a daily basis, they need, desperately need a place to go. Safe and good and coming.
Yes.
Just to help us kind of think through this, can we uh have access to a floor plan?
Randy.
Yeah, Randy, uh, pending.
Yes, for our next meeting.
For our next meeting.
And kind of, we've all been there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's helpful.
Remember, yeah.
Just kind of knowing how much square footage we have.
Yeah.
It's probably six and two hundred square. Yeah, whatever our community programming kind of stuff's around this time of year.
Yeah.
It would be nice enough.
Even for us.
Yeah.
Sometimes to do, you know?
Okay.
Like paint nights are.
Well, they used to do cheer yoga at the library. I'm up to that.
And, you know, lots of, just, we have a great community, we just.
Yeah, I know the gal that does the elementary school theater stuff is always looking at the pot.
Shall we?
Shall we? So, well.
Do we know of any um adjacent cities that have done as well, where we could go look at their facilities and maybe just see what programs they've got going on? Better to steal, don't think about this something brush.
I know the Goodyear, the new Goodyear library.
Yeah.
Well, you have the upper level there. They have like some meeting rooms and teen rooms and they're open space. I don't know what they use it for, but I've seen it up there.
Yeah.
Like study rooms and those type of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
And I think, I think also the surprise library has similar rooms like that too, at their library.
Well, city of Glendale, Intergas Community Center, that's off of Camelback. You keep a point with the library. I mean, we're not gonna overlap what we're doing.
Yeah.
Should be a somewhat.
Yeah.
Done separately.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this would serve this immediate community, whereas the new library is a little harder to, for the kids to just walk.
Anything else tonight? Any other ideas, questions?
I think it might be much similar to what I've heard so far, but I think just, um, I don't want it to be any like one individual thing.
Right.
I think it should be served multiple purposes. Again, I think seeing how much room we have to work with, kind of visualize, but. I could see like one section being like a teen center, you know, for teenagers and to go play after school or summer and. I think if we, if there's room again and walls and all those things, if our current, if the current meeting room where we have. City meetings, if that could be bigger, again, space, all in all consideration, I think that could be a little bigger. That room could be used for that, but for other, you know, larger parties. That's current rooms will small, it's more city council. But, yeah, I think, again, just it should be fixed use, not any one individual thing, primarily should be something that the residents can.
So we don't need to do anything to put it on the agenda.
Continue, so if you want to make a motion to continue that, I have some meeting. I'll present it.
Okay. Second, we're sorry. Doing seconded, all in favor of continuing this discussion next month? That please say aye.
Aye.
Any of both? Okay. All right. Next. Commissioners report on throwing events. Do Brian, would you like to?
Uh, made it over to the uh. Farmers Market, the rec center, which was, I was surprised at how many vendors you had there, how many people were there. Closing. A shame that that kind of stuff is gonna end, you know? But uh, yeah, hopefully we can find a way to continue using that.
Excuse.
Brian.
Was Easter, was that in our last meeting? Yeah, I think it was, it was right after. Yeah, so, um, so yeah, I attended the Easter event in the new park. Thought overall it was well planned, it went good, it was fun to see the Easter bunny come in on a helicopter, so. My daughter brought a friend and they enjoyed it. Yeah, they separated out the. Easter icon into age groups and had volunteers and overall, I think it worked well. But that was, it was better than just having one massive egg hunt. Um, so yeah, that was a good event overall, I thought. Other than that, the city looks good, so nice work, Kyle.
Oh, sorry, Justin. Councilman James, would you have a?
No. I'm hurt, Justin, and I'm still here, yeah. Hey, Brian, I feel like I can catch a lot of people in the room. We have Brian, Ace and Culbrus, is that right?
Yeah, right.
Okay, no, uh, not much to add. I mean, happy to, happy to, you know, answer any questions um about the direction. I I think, uh, you know, that that conversation about the downtown library, everything that's, other than maybe like an indoor pickleball court, racquetball court, I can't ever see that. Working it, working it up to or through council, but um. Thinking of there, uh, we did groundbreaking last week for the aqua free uh. High schools and performing arts high school, the academy, uh, I I think, uh, you know, I. I don't have a lot of the area with the hilltop, uh, I don't think a lot of us really do, unless you, you know, can live here your whole life, but just, uh. The work that Kyle and his team are doing up there removing trees, that is, that is not easy work. And uh, like I said, like Kyle, you know, you're one of my favorites. I appreciate, uh, what you all are doing up there. But yeah, a lot, a lot of moving parts, uh, I'm I'm waiting for the uh. Well, according to the agenda, we're gonna do adjournment, but let me know when we get to the topics for referral to city council, because I do have something I'd like to talk about. And and if this is the time, I'm happy to do it now.
Um, it might be the time.
Yeah, you should probably do that now before you adjourn.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, but yeah, um, back to, back to the library, we, we have a city and we have citizens and we have volunteer citizens serving our missions in council. But we, we can't miss all this. Uh, we, it was a very contentious decision to move the library up to the hilltop. That being said, knowing that the library serves Maricopa County and is not a Litchfield Park library, although it does affect our citizens, what we do with that building is uh. Is is paramount, not just to to the core of the city, but to, to think what we do with that building is gonna keep the path for the next. Thirty, forty, fifty years of how the city is, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts right now. We have, uh. We have dirt being moved on blocks three and four, we have another VA in place with blocks one and two. Uh, I believe we're getting a lot thirteen and fourteen, which is the one behind city council, or excuse me, behind city hall, coming up at the council meeting in two weeks. We're about to tear up Camelback Road, we're about to move the wall out on Camelback Park and put in a twenty-four, forty-five degree parking stall there on Camelback Park. If you're a snowbird and you go away and you come back to September, you're gonna see a lot of stuff different from how it is. The one thing, as it relates to the Camelback Park, that I wanted to bring to this commission, and I I spoke to the mayor about it the other day, but. We don't have a dog park. And uh, I I've had. Half a dozen people in the last couple of months come up to me and mentioned this to me that we don't have a dog park, and it's like. Great, we don't have a duck park. I mean, I have a dog, but uh. I got to think and I think, well, that's actually a decent idea that starts with this committee right here, and so I would, I would ask that we uh. Put this on as a uh, uh. Last comment item for next month. Uh, I I feel like there's a real opportunity with what we're about to do tearing up Camelback Park. You know, we're pushing that wall all the way out about ten feet, we're removing some trees, we're putting in the park, and so our park is gonna get bigger. When we move the wall out. That um, western corner of the lot. Maybe a, maybe a great spot for that, but I I think it's time we uh, we put that on our agenda and start thinking about that and talking to our. Our, our neighbors and our fellow citizens, because I think that's something we need in this city that we don't have. So that's all I have.
Thank you, that's. Thanks, good idea.
And I apologize, y'all might have talked about that before, but um, yeah, new, new guys, so I'm just, uh. You know, I'll, I'll plead on the side of ignorance when I say stuff that y'all already talked about.
I think Dog Park did come up when we were doing dreamscape stuff for Camelback Park, so. It's good to revisit that and uh, see what happens. All right, so. You need to have a motion for put the dog park on the agenda for next month.
Can we get broad for just that corner of the park? Include top up more than just top left.
So are you thinking on a specific area, Councilman, Councilmember James, or or are you saying a dog park in general in Litchfield Park?
Yeah, the latter.
Okay.
We got a dog park in general, but I do think that uh, if we're about to expand that park and build a wall and move it out, and I mean, think about it, if you're driving around Bullittaway. And uh, you get to that corner where the uh, where you start, you're going west and you start to see where the gold course is, I mean, that's, that's an unused area of that park, so. When it, you know, you gotta have, it's gonna be a dog park, it's gotta be big enough so the dogs can run around. It it just seems like uh. The use of that park doesn't really include that western triangle, if you will, so, but yeah. I think I answered your question.
Yeah. So I guess, in general, if you guys think of other areas, you, if you make it broad, you can say whatever areas.
Right. All right, so the motion would be to put the topic of discussion of a dog park on the agenda for next month. Okay, Justin, thank you, second. Kristen, thank you, all in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? All right, that one's on there too. I think that's all we have. So do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody's opposed? No.